All right, it's six o'clock, we'll get started. Uh, call the meeting to order and the pledge by Ms. Lori and the uh prayer by Ms. Pam. If you'll all stand please.
I plead the allegiance to the law of the United States of America and the city of republic, which stands one nation, without borders, in the name of the Lord.
That's great. Uh, we just thank you for this opportunity, want to come together once again and to plan and um make decisions uh for the city of Mount Pleasant. We thank you for the blessings that you've given us just in the last few weeks. Fountain running and the lights and the barbecue festival, God, we just are so grateful for all of this and the beautiful weather. And I just pray that you would be with us tonight as we make more decisions and have more discussion that um your presence will be felt here. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank y'all, love it. Roll call please ma'am.
Ms. Knowles?
Here.
Mr. David?
Here.
Mayor White?
Here.
Ms. Alderson?
Here.
Ms. Johnson?
Here.
Alrighty. Approval and correction of minutes from prior meetings, we've got four of them. Here are public hearing on the annexation of Trotwood and Zion. Study session from September the 11th, a special call meeting of September the 11th. And then the regular session of September the 16th. So, once you've had an opportunity to go through those, I'll entertain a motion that we approve both for its set of minutes.
Yeah, I believe that we accept the minute as presented.
Got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Got a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries, awards, presentations or appointments, Phillip?
I have none.
Okay. Completion and review of unfinished business from prior meeting.
We have none.
Corey, anything you got?
No.
Monthly report from mayor, and I'm gonna be brief, uh. The barbecue festival was a huge success, I think. We had a great Friday night with cars. I think we had about seventy-five. And uh, it was a great evening for it, and then Saturday was, started at some of us at seven-thirty?
Six.
Yeah, six for Phillip and a number of them, and we finished up about five, and it was a great crowd. And I just wanna say thank you to everybody that volunteered and everybody that was here. It took a lot of folks with a lot of work. Uh, in particular, Phillip and I spoke about maybe getting the linemen that really got everything working out here for us with the power system, maybe buying them lunch one day. Because I think Al and everybody in the management of the power system, and they said, "We didn't do it, please thank the people that did." So uh, that's the reason a lot of that's working out there right now. So, I just wanna thank everybody for their support and particularly those that came and, I mean, they, it was work. It was work. Monthly financial budget report, Shifra?
I'm gonna be short this month, but the biggest item I have, of course, is the gas rates, the first reading that we're having tonight. We had the presentation at the study session. Um, we'll have more time to review, obviously, between now and the November meeting. So if you all come up with any questions or concerns, um, and then I think when we get to the actual ordinance, Phillip may have more comments on it to make. But, you know, if you all come up with any other information that you need, and the, and I know you weren't here, Ms. Johnson.
No, no, really.
You already went, okay.
Yeah.
Uh, it is attached to the study session agenda too, and I emailed it to y'all as well. Um, the T- board trainings that we've been working on with y'all to try to get y'all's hours collected. Phillip has found some controller office online trainings that you can do on your own time and still get a certificate. The goal is to meet the hours that are required for your um term, so the four-year term, what the total number of hours is that you would need, I think. To where you are in your term at this point. And then um fill out that form and then attach the certificates with it, so I can send it to the state. And then the property tax files came in last month, and uh it was about three million ninety-seven thousand is what the property taxes were this year, so. That's the total, that doesn't include the, this is just the, you know, additional property taxes that we get, so.
Any questions for Shifra? Any none entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept my finance budget report.
Got a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Got a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, monthly report from city manager, Phillip?
Mayor Commissioners, I have a couple of bullet points to hit. Um, first, on Tuesday, October fourteenth, the planning commission approved the traffic signal design for the intersection of North Main Street and Zion Road and Pope Lane. This signal is a part of the city of Columbia's broader roadway improvements along Trotwood Avenue from a previous approved development that they, there have. Because this segment falls within Mount Pleasant's jurisdiction, Mount Pleasant Planning Commission approval was required. Once installation is complete, the project will be presented to the board uh for formal acceptance. Any questions about that one?
How long do they seem to think it will take?
Uh, they have an aggressive timeline, they wanna start turning dirt by um second quarter of twenty-six. Which, that's one of the initial stage improvements that has to be done, so forty-six months?
Okay.
If they say the timeline?
Good, thank you.
Yes, sir.
And the power system might uh, when they first came back with it, they wanted to just hang wires across and just hang the lights on them like they'll, away it used to be. Power systems.
Well, yeah, yeah, I knew that.
Alright.
That was a good thing.
Yep.
Uh, next, downtown project landscaping has been ordered, planning should take place in the next few weeks. I'm not gonna put a date on that, but next few weeks, hopefully. Um, next topic, street paving, gray lane project is complete. Uh, after talking with Shifra, we're comfortable placing Canaan Road out for bid. So we're gonna get together, put that up and get it out, hopefully, hopefully on the agenda next month. And then late winter twenty-twenty-six, we'll place Mount Joy and Pope Lane out for bid.
Good deal.
Two more things, uh, don't forget about the haunted trails at the community center this weekend, that's Saturday, October twenty-fifth, and it's from four to six for the community. And the last thing I have is our employee spotlight is Officer Corey England. Uh, distinguished career in law enforcement, backing, going all the way back to nineteen ninety-eight. Officer England has spent the past three years serving our community through the Mount Pleasant Police Department. He plays a vital role in managing fleet operations and was instrumental in launching our citizens' police academy. And that's all I have, ma'am.
Oh, you got it. Thank you, Phillip.
Where's Corey at?
He just got off.
Oh. Telling you, telling you, missed the dinner at the grill.
Oh, monthly reports from other departments, wastewater.
Mayor Commissioners, the full report is in your packet. We're finishing up the additional controls programming at the wastewater treatment plant. Barge is working on our documents for uh from, for T-deck, the consent order um by the end of November twenty-twenty-five. I was reviewing the records, we were issued the consent order back in twenty-twelve. Uh, and I think it was a second revision, I just couldn't find the first one. So, I say all I have to say is that it's been um two decades of consent orders related to the wastewater treatment plant. And by November twenty-twenty-five, that is in the past.
Hmm, yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Great news. The opening is?
Uh, next.
Number twenty-nine.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's Wednesday.
And then?
No, it is. Wednesday morning. Mount Pleasant gas.
I'll be brief, you of course, Shifra stated we have the first ordinance reading tonight. We're working with EDA, on the EDA application with Lori Fisher and Murray Lyons to upgrade the gated uh chair glen. Um, still working with the controller for the letter of credit for the mini gas program.
Any questions, Phillip, on that? New business, ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash eleven thirty-six, this will be the first reading and ordinance amending the municipal code of the city of Mount Pleasant. Set forth in title twelve, chapter one regarding an update to current codes, Corey?
For the purpose of this ordinance is just to adopt the twenty-twenty-four versions of the international building code, fuel gas code, mechanical code, plumbing code, property maintenance code, swimming pool and spa code, energy conservation code and residential code. And also to make certain modifications of those codes that's adopted, and like the mayor said, this is your first reading.
Again, this is the first reading on this, any questions, Corey? I think we discussed this at length, it's pretty much just a formal, yes.
And Chris and his department have gone through these and picked out, you know, the, the modifications they wanted to make. I think the ones that you have adopted right now are two thousand and eighteen.
Chris, anything you wanna add to it?
The only thing I can add to it is, we're trying to piggyback off the state bar marshal's office, and they've amended some of the codes within the twenty-one codes that they have adopted. So we're just gonna kind of follow suit and uh use those amended codes so that we're within check with them. Can't go below the code, but you can go above it.
Go above it, correct.
Only thing I'll correct, I can add to it.
Anybody got any questions for Chris or for Corey? Alright, here none entertain a motion?
Make a motion that we accept ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash eleven thirty-six as presented.
Got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash eleven thirty-seven, again, this will be the first reading. An ordinance amending the municipal code of the city of Mount Pleasant, set forth in title seven, chapter two regarding an update to the current fire codes.
So the purpose of this ordinance is just to adopt the twenty-twenty-four edition of the international fire code and certain appendixes that they have chosen. There's no other changes to this ordinance.
Todd, anything you need to add?
Same thing as what Chris said, we're following the state's guidelines.
Okay.
So, my same.
Thank you. Any other questions? Any none entertain a motion?
Make a motion we um accept ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash eleven thirty-seven as presented.
Got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash eleven thirty-eight, again, this will be the first reading of this, correct, Corey? An ordinance amending title nineteen, chapter three, the Mount Pleasant Municipal Code related to gas.
So, like you said, the purpose of this ordinance is just to update certain sections of our gas code. Um, I'll try to outline those real quick, so there's a section nineteen-three oh five, which is connection charges. So the city will provide a gas connection or tap and um three-fourths inch gas meter at the cost of three hundred dollars to new residential and commercial gas customers within the current gas system. So currently, there is no tap fee, like the gas meter is free, and the first fifty feet is free. So now we would be adding a charge for that gas meter of three hundred dollars per new customer. Um. And then we're also charging for the, the line, the gas line. Um, all customers requesting a larger gas meter or tap will have to submit to the utility department for a review. So if it's not just your standard, regular gas meter, they would come to the utility department. Upgraded tap, service line and meter fees shall be set by the city manager and the gas inspector based on the cost of equipment, labor and material furnace. And that's again, if it's a special size meter. Um, this revision also increases the cost of gas connection lines from a dollar fifty per foot to five dollars per foot. Um, we were charging, again, that dollar fifty only for fifty-one feet and above. So the first fifty was free, so now you'll be charging for that connection line. Um, the next section, the customer maintenance charge. So, the customer maintenance fee will be charged to residential, commercial and industrial customers. So these rates, this is just a rate for getting gas, period. Has nothing to do with the amount of usage. For residential, it's five dollars, for commercial, it's twenty-five dollars, and for industrial, it's seventy-five dollars. The previous rate in your current ordinance right now is five dollars for everybody. So this is the same fee for residential, but it's an increase for commercial and industrial customers. Um, the schedule of rates has also changed, we'll come back to that one in a second. Um, the customer billing and payment policy section has changed to remove the twenty-five dollar service fee, because we already have a seventy-five dollar reconnection fee. So, if you're having to connect, we're already charging for that, so we don't wanna charge people double. Um, there is, there was comparison sheet in your packet, and I'll go back to the schedule of rates. This is, you wanna?
Yeah, if you don't mind.
Yep.
Uh, hey, what would you put that? There you go.
Yeah.
So, Mayor Commissioners, this is from the presentation of the night from the rate study. Um, basically the schedule rates, um, one thing I did go back and look through the gas minutes that were in the vault. We ain't had a rate increase since twenty-twelve, in seventeen, they did pass the five dollar. Uh, so that being said, uh, it is a fourteen percent increase across the board. The fixed rate that we're, been billing for years was four seventy-five, it will go to six seventy. That's one thing I do wanna have in the revision of the ordinance next month, is that fixed rate put in there. And so, if we're no longer here in the future, because it's really hard to find that from twenty-twelve. Uh, so it is fourteen percent increase across the board, and the only other thing, I think Corey hit on it, um, we have one industrial transportation rate, um, which is Tennessee alone, it has not ever been raised, and we're going up twenty-five percent on that transportation rate only. Twenty-five cents, it went up twenty-five cents. So, um, I just wanted to make sure we stated that, and then from the rates.
Yes.
One thing I honestly, uh, you know, like I said Thursday night, you know, shame on us for, for not already doing something about the gas. And that's a long time to go without raising rates. And in saying that, how many homes are on Magnolia going up?
Ninety-five.
Ninety-five homes on Magnolia going up, two hundred and forty-seven possibly on Trotwood. And none of these are gonna be getting gas, so that's, so you take that right there, that's three hundred dollars a tap. We are losing because we haven't done that. And it's a shame, it really is.
Any other comments? We had a lot of discussion about this Thursday night. Uh, the average increase is about twelve dollars or so per residential customer, and that's it. The largest section is going to be passed on to the industrial users, which is the mayor.
Um, so the rate itself, an average over year for just residential is probably six dollars, but remember the transportation rate from East Tennessee, that's, we can't do anything about that. So you were right, it's probably ten, twelve bucks a month total.
I'm just glad we're holding the corporate, the corporations in that accountable.
And if you look at the presentation, the industrial was over fifty percent of your use.
Yeah, that's right. Okay, any other questions? Here none entertain a motion?
Make a motion that we accept ordinance twenty-twenty-five eleven thirty-eight.
Got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Resolution twenty-twenty-five dash forty-eight, a resolution calling for a public hearing on the proposed annexation of territory in the city of Mount Pleasant by owner consent and approving a plan of services, Corey?
So the purpose of this resolution is to set a public hearing on the annexation and the plan of services. It does not annex the property or adopt the plan of services. It sets the public hearing for both and approves the plan of services that will be considered at that public hearing and included in the notices. This resolution sets forth the territory proposed for annexation and includes the plan of services. It also outlines the public notices that will be sent. You all considered a resolution setting the public hearing once before. This one is for the same purpose, but it is different because, um, number one, the public notices cited in the resolution are corrected. Uh, number two, the legal descriptions of the property to be annexed includes the portions of old Zion Road extension that runs between the property identified on tax map three, parcel twenty-nine oh six, and property identified as tax map three, parcel twenty-nine. And it excludes the portions of all three parcels and the road that is in the city of, city limits. And I'll get up and show you that in just a second. Um, wanna explain the resolution first. So, the date of the public hearing in your draft resolution is left blank. Before you vote on this resolution, I need you to choose a date for the public hearing. So I sent you all an email with these dates, but the dates that I propose are December second, December eighth, December eleventh or December sixteenth. Um, my preference would be November, uh, December eighth at the earliest. Um, yes, sir.
Is the county and the road superintendent signed off on everything?
So, the, I've been working with the county attorney and with the road superintendent indirectly, they're the county attorney. They have approved the process for um us annexing the portion of old Zion Road extension that runs between those two properties. I am waiting on the road superintendent to approve the language, but he approved it previously, so I'm presenting it as it was approved by them, yes, sir.
Aren't that where we are? Isn't that where we are tonight?
Hmm.
Is because we had to come back because something wasn't done? So now, it hasn't been signed off, but we're assuming that it is, so we're just gonna go ahead and, and go with this ordinance?
This is to set a date and with the plan of services?
That's what I'm saying though, but if it hasn't been approved, how can you do an ordinance? How can you, how can we go through it if it hasn't been approved?
Because it has been approved by the county attorney and by the, it's not going to Murray County Board. It's would only go to.
Somebody have to sign off?
No, it would not, it would be, it says in there that it would be contingent on the road superintendent approving it.
That's what I'm saying, he hasn't approved. Verbally, he hasn't signed off, so that's what I'm saying, huh? It seemed like to me it would go around and so.
And, you know, candidly, that's why we've, I've waited this long to even get this far, because I wanted to make sure that the plan of services I've presented was finalized. I mean, you can not pass it tonight and say we wanna make sure that every single box is checked, that is, that is allowed, you know, that's within your prerogative to vote for that. I'm not against that option either, I just wanted to present what I've got. Um, this is, we addressed the non-contiguousness of that one parcel by annexing the road. And I've worked with the county attorney to figure out that process. Um, and I, I do believe that the plan of services as presented accounts for that non-contiguous parcel, because if you annex the road, then that second parcel is no longer non-contiguous, it becomes contiguous.
Our plan of services is debatable also. But regardless of that, you know, the road superintendent hasn't signed off. Me personally, I mean, he may sign off in the morning, I don't know. Me personally, I cannot vote on something that's, that somebody that's making a decision hasn't signed off on.
I understand that completely, that's fair.
Yeah.
Can I just clarify that what we're proposing tonight is contingent upon that? So if he was to not approve it, then we would not be having that, that would stop the meeting?
Then the, so, the plan of services as drafted says that the plan of services is contingent on that happening. So, the part that I'm worried about is, would not be him approving or transferring the road to you right now. It would be him approving the process. That's, that's the only part that's incomplete in the plan of services.
Understand what Pam is saying, contingent, understand what you're saying. But wasn't it like that, the last meeting we had? It was contingent that all of this was gonna be signed, and it wasn't, now we gotta go back?
The, the public hearing that we canceled did not include the road at all. That's the difference in this one.
We knew the road was there.
We knew the road was there.
We knew the road was there.
I understand, um, uh, Michael, can you put the maps on the? I just wanna point out the differences in the property that included in the plan of services and in the annexation. These are in your packet, they're attached to the resolution and also to the. So, this is, these two parcels, this whole outline here is the actual parcel, like the legal description of that parcel that's owned by those people. However, this section here is inside the city limits of Columbia. So, the legal description of the property proposed for annexation is this boundary. It excludes the property that's in the city limits of Columbia, because you cannot annex property that's in the city limits of Columbia. Okay, next one. So this is the other side of the road. Little more, the same thing, this. Messing with me. Okay, so, this whole boundary here is the legal description for that land. But, this part right here is in the city limits of Columbia, so y'all cannot annex that part. So, this is the, the area that's described, so when you see that legal description in the annexation resolution, or not, in the resolution proposing the hearing, um, and in the plan of services, this is what it's describing. Okay, and then, Michael, the next one. In the same situation with the road, so this is that road that was in between those two parcels we just looked at. And, can you go some more? So it's that portion of old Zion Road extension that runs all the way between those two parcels, but you'll see right here, zoom out a little bit. Okay, so, this right here, that portion of that road has already been annexed into Columbia, it's on Columbia's road. So it is excluded from the part that's in your annexation. Um. This has been revised, so the legal descriptions that are in there outline those. Does that make sense? Okay. Um, and then, again, the plan of services, that would be, you'd have a public hearing on it, you would vote on annexation and the plan of services, y'all would debate that after you had the public hearing, but, yes, sir.
I'd just like to say one other thing, and I probably shouldn't say it, but I'm going to. We sit up here every night and pray to our Lord in heaven, every meeting that we have. And we pray that we will do what the people of this city wants. And it is ninety-nine point nine percent against this, but yet, we're for it. I don't understand why we even have prayer at a meeting, I don't. That's it.
And y'all have not voted to annex the property yet?
But that's, I mean, this, this right here is leading to it, same thing, same thing. We've already paced it once, we had to go back because of, of misses that we made or whatever. Pam, you can look at me, I don't care.
I'm just looking at you because you're speaking.
Well?
I'm, I think I'm supposed to give you that dignity, right?
Well?
Corey, would you, anything else you've got on this?
No, that, that's all I have, I know this has been a confusing process, you know, we canceled that public hearing. If you have other questions, I also know you have been, you know, inundated with emails and calls and things from citizens and everyone else. So if y'all have questions for me, I'm happy to answer them.
Sure. And Corey's been there for that for day one. Any other comments, Lori?
No, I just wanna look at the plan of services as well.
Yeah. Good.
That's in the street section.
Yeah.
Think you go ahead?
No, I'm.
Pam?
No, sir, I wanted to follow through and make sure that everything's been looked at.
Yep.
Yeah, absolutely, that's why we're here.
Yep.
Absolutely. So, Corey, are we ready to look at the date, or do you wanna go through the plan of services a little more?
We can, I think Commissioner Knowles is looking at it right now, if you wanna pull it up. Uh, Michael, can you scroll to the um plan of services? It's, it's, if you just keep going down with the resolution. That's the legal description I was talking about, that's the, the same map that we just looked at.
Mm-hmm.
It's in there twice, alright, let's go back. So this is A, um. These are, you know, this one says Mount Pleasant's gonna serve it with our police services, this property, they provide uh fire protection as well. Um, number three, saying that this territory would be provided with water, so it's gonna be a power and water service. There's an updated letter in there from Columbia. Um, B is the, so the edge wastewater um will be providing the wastewater to the territory if annexed. Um, that exhibits the same, the electric and power, that is, they're saying that Mount Pleasant Power will provide that service. Gas, this area will not have gas. Streets, scroll to the next page, okay, this is the main part that was changed. Um. A says that uh the street department maintains the mowing and public right of way inside the city limits. If this request requires any public right of way maintenance, this would also be reviewed by the, for the city in the annexation. All right. Now, B says the city in conjunction with, in agreement with Murray County Road Superintendent, will annex, take ownership of and maintain in accordance with city policies. will annex, take ownership of and maintain in accordance with city policies and standards as provided from time to time. Portion of Old Zion Road identified as Route number OA seven five five Old Zion Road on the Murray County Road listing will particularly describe the solids. This legal description is that little piece of that road excluding the part that's in the city limits of. Okay, next part. So there are no intersecting properties or roads or bridges comprising the primary route to the properties proposed for annexation that does not adjoin the boundary of the main part of municipality. Murray County Road Superintendent has requested that the city take possession, ownership and control of the portion of Old Zion Road Extension described in section B above, and transfer sand for Murray County Road List to the city and Mount Pleasant's Road List. Taking control of the portion of Old Zion Road Extension described herein makes the non-contiguous parcel contiguous with the boundary of the main part of the municipality. For the reasons of plan of services, it's contingent on the Murray County Highway Superintendent approving the transfer of the portion of Old Zion Road Extension described in section B above as that portion. They have already requested that we take that. They have already approved that process, but it would be contingent on them actually approving that transfer. D, there are no improved streets in the proposed annex area other than the portion of Old Zion Road identified in section B above. All new streets within the proposed territory would be installed as future development occurs. The funding and construction of street improvements within the annex area, including any change or improvement for the portion of Old Zion, Old Zion Road identified in section B, will be the responsibility of the owner of the property and/or adjacent properties as the case. So, um, and then upon satisfaction satisfactory completion of improved streets and other improvements in accordance with city policies and standards and expiration of all warranties, the city commission shall accept the improved streets and other improvements. This is the same process you follow with all subdivisions. Once the roads are done, then you accept them. Same thing if they, if the, the developer had to make improvements to that road to service the subdivision, based on their subdivision regulations, those improvements would become part of the city Mount Pleasant Road System. Upon acceptance by the city, the city shall maintain all improved streets and other improvements in accordance with city policies and standards as revised from time. So that's, you would maintain those roads the same way that you maintain any other roads that are in the city limits. So this part is new. So all of that section seven that I just read, that is new, that's the part we've been working on. And sanitation is the same, that it will provide sanitation services. I think that's. Nine will provide the planning and zoning. Any new development that would go in that annex area would have to go through your planning commission. Section same code enforcement, same thing, that would go through the Christmas Department. Street lighting, um, street lights will be installed in line with city and Mount Pleasant Power Systems standards in developed commercial and residential areas. Recreation residents of the annex area will have immediate access to all city recreation facilities. These things and standards and policies will guide future expansion. The annex property is under the jurisdiction of the Murray County Schools. Notification will be sent to the Board of Education. On approval of annexation, also notification of the public hearing that you all set will be sent to, uh, Murray County Public Schools immediately. But in no event, less than thirty days from the public hearing that you set. And that's the basis for the dates that I've suggested. No, that's a lot. Any questions about that or does it make sense to you all?
It will take a day or two to digest it, but I can say that the people that I've spoken with have been anxious to see this. Thank you for all the work. Hey, any other questions? Lori didn't kind of get you a summary, I'll call it?
Yes, sir.
Anybody else got anything else, any questions or anything?
Yeah.
Comment.
I'd just like to say that it, it may appear to some that it's ninety-nine percent, but there's a, a lot of people that are not against it that are just being quiet because they don't want to get in the middle of everything. But I think what's important is whether you're for it or against it, is that we consider, make sure that we've gone over every single detail because whichever side ends up coming out on top of this, the other side's probably gonna come back. So I want to make sure whether, whether I'm for it or I'm against it, that we make sure that we've looked at every single detail and that we've gone through everything and make sure that we follow the process completely. So that's where, how I figure. It's not because I'm for or against anything. It's because I want to make sure we do it right.
Corey, I do appreciate you and your going back, looking at everything, getting us on the right track, make sure we have looked and got all the details here for us to make a decision. Uh, and I do appreciate all your hard work. And I appreciate this package you put together.
I promise you, if there was a vote taken in this city today, there wouldn't be fifty people for this. There would not be fifty people for it.
Lori, anything else you'd like to add?
School system, um. He said he was gonna, it would be a letter sent immediately. But would the residents have a choice of attending Murray County, like Columbia or Mount Pleasant? Or is it gonna be all of them present and another school being built?
So, um, their purpose, I don't know the answer to that. I would assume that Murray County Schools decides the zoning for the schools. We send them a letter just to let them know this is being considered. I think they probably look at it as, okay, now there will be more citizens in Mount Pleasant, so all these kids would go to not schools in Mount Pleasant. So I think that would actually help you all get, you know, improvements to your schools or a new school or whatever, but I don't, you know, I don't make that call, so I don't want to speculate on what exactly they do with this information, but, um, we do let them know as far as, so they could come to the public hearing and they can say, yes, we are for it, no, we're not, or they can do like last time and not attend. But then we also, you have to send them the letter that was referenced in their act. If it were to be annexed, we would send them a letter and then they would, I'm assuming, just add that to the zone for Mount Pleasant Schools.
And then the water would come from CPWS?
That's correct.
I thought Commissioner, when Eric said that Columbia was almost out of water.
This is a, if we could just talk with the commission. So this, um, the letter that's in your packet is a will serve letter from the city of Columbia that they would serve that area. And actually that development, I believe, but that's not, you know, for, for you, it's just that that would be servicing it.
Part of the plan of services.
But that is something that makes this annexation different than like a standard annexation. You know, that's you as a board are going to decide if this moves forward, whether or not, um, the annexation generally and that plan of services benefits the people in that area and also the citizens of Mount Pleasant as a whole. So that is, each element of that plan of services is a factor that you consider.
Nothing from anybody else?
What, what about the dates? Is this gonna be part of the date?
We're getting ready to go into that right now.
Yeah, I think that, um.
Corey has requested that be December the eighth, which I think is probably an appropriate date because if you look at it, the December the first or Dec- November the twenty-fourth, if it's too close to the holiday, you're gonna have a number of people traveling and that would not be far for, fair for anybody to try to have to make it back. So I think December the eighth would be an appropriate date for that. That gives everybody a chance to get home, get settled in, get done with what they need to do. Mike?
Okay, so December the eighth, six o'clock or five o'clock or what?
Y'all take your time.
Okay. That is all that would be done that day. That correct? There will be no voting by this committee that day. Is this correct?
That's up to y'all. So thi- this is to set the public hearing.
That's one, that's one I don't want, you know, I don't want nobody to be surprised come that date and then we, well, I'm sorry, we're gonna be voting on this tonight. I think that needs to be decided or not.
That's fine. This resolution sets the public hearing, but if you want to set the, call a special called meeting that day as well to vote, you can, or you can do.
That's what I'm saying though. This right here is just for the public meeting, no voting.
That's the way it's drafted right now. But y'all, if you have a different plan, you can change it. Yes, sir.
When can the draft be changed?
No, I'm saying this re- the, this sets a public hearing. If you would also like to set a public, like a special meeting that day to vote, you can do that. That's not what I've presented, but you're, I feel like you're saying that, I don't know if you're saying you want to vote that day or you don't want to vote that day.
I just want to make sure that we come to a public meet, you know, we have a public meeting and then after everybody's spoken, we take a vote. I don't, I want to make sure we don't do that. Or I say, I don't want to do that.
Well, as is proposed right now, we will not be doing that.
That's what I don't understand as it is proposed right now.
We won't be having that vote at that meet.
Okay.
The resolution. The resolution just sets the public hearing and I'd like you to fill in the date. Then, so if, if you did know December eighth, we would have a public hearing on December eighth.
That's it.
That's all. On the annexation and the plan of services. And then you would vote on it. You would on, you would talk about it, your study session on December eleventh, and then you would vote on it on December the sixteenth at your regular meeting.
Correct.
If that's what you want to do. That.
That's correct.
I just don't want something thrown to me.
The six o'clock sound good for everybody on December the eighth.
Y'all call it.
It's pretty much the call. That's when we usually have everything. That kind of works for everybody to get off work and get here.
December the eighth, six o'clock.
I, I'd like to say a word or two.
Okay.
And then we'll have a motion. I've, I've kept my mouth shut on this because of a couple of reasons. I wanted to meet with some of the people that are opposed to this. Mr. Rainey, thank you, you and your wife for taking the time to come speak. I appreciate that. And I do. I went and talked with Tom Price individually about this as well because of their concern about the battlefield. And, um, coming from the world I came from, I look at numbers and I look at them hard. And it's been brought up the number of people that are opposed to it. Well, as of this moment, right now, if you look at the people that have told me and the people that have attended these meetings that are opposed to this are less than point zero zero seven of the voting population of the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee.
I got worried about getting voted in the next year. Y'all voted it, old man?
Secondly.
Seven, zero, wow.
That's a lot less than even one percent of the population.
But that, that's me, well, right Bill?
That's the people that I have known to have attended the meetings and have spoke and that are members of the city of Mount Pleasant's voting district. I do my numbers, guys.
I question.
Well, you can do the numbers. They're there. They're real.
I've done the numbers. I've done the numbers too.
And then if I ride by and I see the number of signs that are no to two forty-seven, it's less than the same number.
How many people was in this meet for the last two months that stood up and voted they didn't want?
Mike, you had your chance to speak. Can I get mine please, sir?
Of course you're gonna get yours.
I've given you yours. Then I look at the, uh, financial benefits to this community that would come along with it. And it's substantial. And I hear all the people that would like to have different opportunities for dining, shopping, and everything that comes along with it because those folks that build those facilities spend a fortune on knowing where to build them. They don't just go throw something up because they think it's the right place to do it. They do a lot of time and a lot of money in figuring out where it needs to be. And I cannot tell you overwhelmingly the number of people that have stopped me even over this weekend at the barbecue festival and says, we need to get this done. Overwhelmingly, the number of people that are in favor of this. And I spent, thank you, Lori, for your time here as well. We spent a lot of time here, didn't we? And we ran into a lot of people. And overwhelmingly, everybody was for it. Now, yes, there's a few, no, and I've listened to them and I've taken the time to meet with those folks that are opposed because I felt like it was the right thing to do. Then it brings up what the property is. And as I brought up Tom and others about it, the significance of it. This property has been for sale for a number of years. A number of years. This property didn't just come up for sale yesterday. So that property's been available for anybody to have purchased, whether they wanted to keep it as it was or change it for a number of years. And as I was told by a number of people that, well, we are not proactive, we are reactive. And I, my question to them was, so is that the city of Mount Pleasant's fault? And they all had to look at me and go, no, it's not your fault. So I brought up, all right, downtown Columbia, which is a battlefield of the Civil War. Make sure we all understand that. Downtown Columbia is a Civil War battlefield site. And there was just a six-story apartment with the ground floor in commercial that was approved there and not one person spoke out against it. Not one. So overwhelmingly, the numbers say that the constituents want this to happen. And that's what I have to focus on. Okay. Everybody's had their opportunity. Y'all entertain a motion that we set December the sixth.
Robert's rule of law, when everybody's spoken, somebody else can speak again if they want to.
Go right ahead.
I'm, I'm asking my, my lawyer.
Yes.
I'm gonna fix say something else. We talked about Columbia, the courthouse. People fought there. I still don't know if this is true or not to this day, except for what people tell me. They were also had a man hung on the courthouse. Does that, is that, does that make anything? So, you know, when you bring up, you know, things about other cities, what is, what has Columbia got since they've done all of this building? How much more eating places have they got? Where do they go, people? They go to Spring Hill. That's where they go. So don't think, you know, just because these homes and all this is coming here and, and you talk about revenue? Yes. Let's just say, you know, from the permits that they're gonna get, agree with you, Bill, six hundred thousand right off the bat. Where's that six hundred thousand going right off the bat? A new trash truck. They picked up the trash up there. So it's not, it's, it's not all what you think it is.
Anybody else? Well, we have a vote. Hearing on entertain a motion that we set December the eighth at six P M as a public hearing with no vote.
Make a motion to set December the eighth as a public hearing.
Got a motion for December the eighth to be the public hearing? Do we have a second? Got a second roll call, please.
Ms. Knowles? Mr. Davis?
I am totally against this period. So I, you know, I understand, you know, about it going to a public hearing. But I'm not gonna vote for a public hearing that I know the majority of the people that's against it. And I'm not gonna vote. I'm voting no. And that's the reason I voted.
Yes.
Yes.
Awesome. Yes.
Four to one. Thanks, everybody. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty-nine, a resolution authorizing the City of Mount Pleasant to participate in public, public entity partners, safety partners, matching grant program.
Uh, Mayor, can I jump in?
Yes, please.
Real quick, so when you voted on December eighth, did you also approve that resolution with that date inserted?
Yes.
No? Okay, so, you, you voted on the date, can you go back and vote on the resolution with that date inserted?
Okay. Yeah, let's do it up.
I make a motion, resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty-nine.
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight, sorry, forty-eight, that we accept December the eighth at six o'clock for a public hearing.
Is that what you need, Cory?
You're voting to approve that resolution as presented with that date included, correct?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Got a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Roll call again, please.
Ms. Knowles?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Again, no, because the citizens have told me, no.
Uh, they're right.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Four to one. Thank you. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty-nine, a resolution authorizing the City of Mount Pleasant to participate in public entity partners, safety partners, matching grant program. Phillip, Cory, who's going to handle that one?
Mayor and Commissioners, this is, um, public entity partners grant, it's matching a fifty-fifty, and what we bought with it was a utility worker's boots, so, uh, two thousand and then, um, art funds, two thousand.
Any questions to Phillip? Hearing now entertain a motion.
Miss Motion, we have from Res- Resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty-nine as presented.
Got a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Got a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash fifty, a resolution for City of Mount Pleasant to accept awarded grant from Firehouse Subs, Public Safety Foundation for Critical Life-saving Equipment.
So the city applied for and was awarded funds from Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation to purchase new fire safety equipment. The grant is specifically for an AMC spreader, a cutter, a ram, extended reach tips, and accessories valued at almost forty thousand dollars, it's the jaws of life.
Jaws of life, hundred percent, no matching.
Awesome.
So the purpose of this resolution is to accept the award, authorize the city manager to execute the documents needed to get the money.
Good deal, this is fantastic. Fantastic.
I will agree.
All right, any other questions? Entertain a motion, we accept it.
I make a motion, we accept Resolution twenty twenty-five dash fifty and be very grateful.
Yes, absolutely. Second here, for anybody?
I second that.
Got a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash fifty-one, a resolution authorizing the city to accept fund from the Tennessee Highway Safety Office Grant Program.
Mayor Commissioners, this is the police department, um, they were awarded nine thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars, one hundred percent, no matching funds, and that is for laptops for patrol vehicles, for upgrading.
Questions to Phillip?
Thankful for that.
Hearing now entertain a motion.
I make a motion, we accept Resolution.
We got a couple of them.
Go ahead, Laura.
I'm hoping that we accept Resolution twenty twenty-five dash fifty-one as presented.
Got a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Got a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash fifty-two, a resolution authorizing the city to apply to the, for the transportation planning grant.
Mayor Commissioners, we apply for this every year, we've not been successful, uh, it's an eighty percent, um, eight percent, uh, grant with ten percent match, uh, and it's for the street plans that we try to do every year. That will, we'll try to get it and see where it goes.
There's a twenty, ten percent match by somebody else too, right? So, I know that math doesn't add up.
Yeah, sorry.
It's twenty percent, or it's eighty percent grant and ten percent match by us and ten percent by someone else.
Yeah, ten percent federal and ten percent us. Sorry about that.
Okay. What it says in the resolution, we'll make sure of it. All right. Any questions on that one? Entertain a motion for approval.
I make a motion that we accept Resolution twenty twenty-five dash fifty-two as presented.
Got a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Got a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Downtown change order number four.
Mayor and Commissioner, uh, this will be the last change order, it is for forty-four thousand five hundred and thirty-one dollars. Uh, the majority of it, or not the majority, but a big portion of it was the pavers out around the square where we sealed them, where they had the loose gravel or whatever the sand mix, it would have been gone pretty quick. There were some landscaping left out of the plans, uh, by mistake, so we're putting those back in and also adding a few more. And then there's a railing from a change order that we have to put for ADA requirements down at the church. Um, with that being said, uh, we were awarded additional four hundred and thirteen thousand from the GNRC, uh, to help offset some of that. We, um, feel like that the change orders, whatever you approv- when you approved this over a year or so ago, that after it's all said and done, it's going to be pretty close to what you approved. Yes, sir.
Now, Phillip, I, I guess I've had several people, I guess, to ask, and to make sure, so it's, it's on video tonight, so I guess, you know, if anybody's listening, they can hear it directly. Some people is understanding that all of this was done with grant money, and I said, no, it's not all done with grant money, but a lot of it was. But this here was a seven million dollar project, close to it, is that right? Correct. So, the Mount Pleasant citizens, they will be owing close to a million and a half on this, is that sort of in the, so am I sort of right on that?
You are accurate, I don't know the exact number, but...
That is the amount of the borrowing that was used towards it.
I just want, I just want them to know that.
The city did the borrowing between twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, so the funds were borrowed a long time ago to fund this, and it was one point five million, the rest of it has been cash.
Right, but it's, with me saying that, when you say a million and a half is a lot of money, but seven million is a lot of money.
And we also had a twenty percent match on the grant.
Right, but the city, but the city, you know, has actually come out good on this, I will say that.
That twenty percent match...
But I just don't want somebody saying, you know, that, well, the city wouldn't have nothing on it, but we were.
We have twenty percent match on the grant, we have to meet that, obviously, and then, um, any utility work we did, this is a cheat off, that they don't, we aren't...
Right. All right, thank you.
All right. Need a motion?
Yes.
The change order.
I make a motion that we accept the downtown change order number four.
Got a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Got a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. General comments from citizens, Mr. Robert Lacy has signed up. Okay? Board staff comments?
Enjoyed the barbecue festival, I must say that. I hope the next one is just as good or not better.
Amen. Anything else, anybody?
No.
Danny, you want to get up and speak right quick?
Good thing. County Commission met last night, and we approved guaranteed maximum price in the amount of six million one hundred fifty-seven thousand seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars to, uh, build a new library in Mount Pleasant. And also, find it. Uh, yes, here it is. We also approved a, uh, survey of Cherry Glen Park, to, to survey off the, uh, Camel Lake.
Yes.
So we approved that to be done, so it's going to be, that's going to be a Murray County Park at Camel Lake.
Right.
We also approved, um, money to add on to the animal shelter, and, uh, we also approved sixteen million dollars to redo the courthouse, the old courthouse in Murray County, in Columbia.
Interesting.
And it cost a twenty-nine million dollars, all of that, but none of it, it's not going to be a tax increase for citizens of the county at all, so, yes.
Hey, Danny, what is the, I guess, the future of the courthouse?
It's a question.
It's, uh, the mayor, the mayor has decided she wants to stay there. Um, it's going to be, it's going to be redone to where, what it used to be, but I don't know, but it was open all the way to the time.
It was, that's right.
So that's what, that's what they're going to do. They're going to renovate it and take it back to its original state. The mayor's office will stay there, the county commission will move back to the, uh, to the courthouse, the DA will be on the third floor, and they will be paying rent, which will actually pay for, over, over the long haul, will pay for all of that, so, um, good things, good things from Mount Pleasant, so.
Yes, yeah. Thank you, Danny.
Appreciate what you did for us, Danny.
Yeah, thank you, Danny.
Danny, before you leave, can you just say a little bit about the partnership with, um, is it UT and Murray Regional?
Yes, Murray Regional and, uh, UT entered into a, it's an educational thing, uh, Murray Regional is going to become a, uh, teaching hospital.
Mm-hmm.
So I think Dr. Chaney said they were going over, I don't know, eight thousand applications to choose, he has fourteen, uh, residents to, to come to Murray Regional Hospital, so they will be a teaching hospital in affiliation with University of Tennessee.
That's great.
So that's a good thing.
Really good thing.
Anything else?
You're good.
Sure?
You're good.
All right.
Thank you, Dan.
You're welcome.
Appreciate what you're doing.
Anything, anybody else?
I, I just want to, uh, thank Brian for coming out tonight, he's in my leadership Mary class, and we got back today from our retreat, and here he is at our commission meeting, thank you for coming.
Hey, now you got attending a meeting out of the way already.
That property, hold on a minute.
I make, I make a motion to adjourn.
Me too.
We need to play.
Mayor, I, I left out one thing.
All right, Danny, what you got?
Also, at Howard Field, there will be a little girl's softball.
Hey, man.
Thanks, too, so.
Good.
Yes, good.
All right, we have a motion to adjourn, we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, everybody.